Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of the today's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Seeing none. Prove payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve bills.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Approve minutes of November three and ten, two thousand and fifteen.
Move approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. First item, authorization to execute quitclaim deed for segment of Agassar recreational trail. County Attorney's Office, Steve.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, what we have is one more piece of cleanup of the Trail Division. In the, sort of in the middle of the division of the trail, Polk County acquired some additional width along part of its piece of the trail. So, that part of the trail was granted to the group as a whole. And then, in the course of division, it remains, essentially as far as title is concerned, it remains in the property of an organization that no longer exists. So, the proposed action is that this county quitclaim, basically give up whatever claim it may have on this little bit of Polk County trail. We grant it to Polk County to the extent we own it. Norman County, Norman County?
Polk.
Polk and Norman will each do the same thing. And then, Polk County will have all the ownership, all the responsibility for that section of trail.
I think this is a section that we thought was part of the whole deal, but really, we had to come up with a separate action, you know, but it was just...
So, I make a motion that we quitclaim this thing to Polk County.
Motion and a second on the quitclaim. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Next item, authorization to execute agreement for cost allocation planned services with government and management group. Brian Burke.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. What you have before you is, I'll say really, a continuation. This is the Dennis Ponce and the Government Management Group is the one that's been doing the MAXIS review for social services for a number of years. Just as an example, we pay a fee of sixty-nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to do this and then on an annual basis. I asked Lori yesterday what we recouped, and it was two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars last year in regards to it. So, it's something we need to do to make sure that all the federal grants are being, the time is being applied properly to the federal grants. So, we'd ask for your approval for the next three years on this.
Discussion.
Second the motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the matter? Looks like it's a good plan. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. All membership in Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails. That, I thought we had belonged to that, and that's the group that advocates for parks and trails. And two or three years ago, when the legislature finally changed the formulas, so Greater Minnesota actually gets a share of the parks and trails money in the state. This is probably the primary group in the state that advocates it for outstate or out of the metropolitan area counties. And so, John Young had contacted me. He thought we were members too, and he was at their meeting a couple of weeks ago and found that we weren't. So, I guess my request was that we join as members of that group to help ensure that Greater Minnesota continues to get its share of funding for parks and trails.
The fee is the four, four fifty?
Yeah, it's population-based, and so based on our population, it would be that four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so.
Do we have any idea how many counties belong to this, or?
I'm not sure. There are individual communities that belong. There's a number of counties that participate from Greater Minnesota. A lot of counties participate from Greater Minnesota. And groups, like we belong as part of the Heartland Trail Organization.
As long as you belong to this Heartland Trail, we should probably get involved in this.
Yes.
I make a motion to join this.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, community reports were at already, so Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Friday, November thirteenth, Lakes and Prairies Board Meeting, the general business, and then most of the discussion was continued upon the consideration regarding combining West Central Community Action Partnership and Lakes and Prairies Community Action Partnership. And this has been ongoing for some time, and it will continue to move on down the line. And then, we appointed Lori Schwartz as interim director of Lakes and Prairies. And that was basically the meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Frank?
Tuesday, went to MetroCOC Executive Committee meeting. Main discussion there was Wes Fargo was trying to get another member on the board that he'll, because of their population increase, that they want representation according to population, the way some of the others are laid out. So, pretty much discussed that. Probably will get approved there in the next regular meeting. Thursday, went down to Fergus Falls for West Central Initiative meeting. Found out as far as the loan program and stuff that, you know, sometimes you wonder whether our county gets anything out of stuff like that, you know, but they gave a one-million-dollar loan to a company in Dilworth. So, that's, it was very, I mean, I don't know, they're happy to hear that. I mean, but, I mean, we're getting something out of the program there, you know, so. They went over a developer where they got a new program called Develop Minnesota, where they want to come out when we have a goal, like in West Central, instead of saying that we will increase this, you know, they're going to make a goal, you know, they're going to come up, we will increase this by two percent, you know, that they have a goal to get to or whatever, you know. So, they want to go what they call smart goals or something like that. I mean, they're not so general with their policy statements, you know. A lot of times, you get these policy statements, and you just say, we will do this for the next four months, you know. They want to come up with specifics. What will they do? And so, they're trying to change their goals there. Then we had a chat vote and talked about the labor market trends, you know, that Minnesota, our age group is, we're not a young state anymore. We're getting to, you know, the sixty-five group is getting, there's getting to be more and more, including myself.
That's shocking looking around the table here.
Yeah.
I'll hold down the average.
Yeah, you really helped a lot, didn't you, in doing this?
But it shows that Northeast and Northwest Minnesota, not so much that the jobs will be down, but the workers, the number of workers will be decreasing because probably more jobs are available. So, there, you know, there aren't that many, there's more jobs becoming available than people becoming available to enter the workforce. So, Northeast and Northwest Minnesota is, according to their statistics, will show that there's a decrease in number of workers available, you know. And they're looking at, they're saying that people stay in a job is forty-six years, you know. So, that probably wasn't for any of us around here, but I guess the new job market, you know, if they stay in a job for forty-six years, that's their tenure. And they gave a list of jobs in demand in West Central Minnesota, and the top one was registered nurses, you know, and jobs that need to be filled. Yesterday, we was out at Linden for the township meeting. Good reports from all our, I mean, Dave Overbow was out there, Mitzi Garland for H, Shannon Thompson, Bill Burquist, Kirk, you know, there's quite a few of our people gave good reports out there, you know. And just a town meeting, the township gave good information out there. Brian gave the overall, but county's been doing, and stuff with that, talked quite a bit about the jail and stuff. So, other than that, that was my meetings.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I attended Lakes and Prairies Transitional Meeting where we talked about, like Commissioner Ingersoll said, the possible merger with West Central. I had a joint facilities meeting with the city of Moorhead and the school district of Moorhead, where we, they overviewed their referendum vote passing. I also want to say that there were some people from our staff that helped them with maps and election issues. And I just want to give a shout out to our staff because they did such a great job helping. I had another Lakes and Prairies Transitional Meeting where we voted to elect a interim executive director. I'm really excited about that. And just think, again, their staff is great to help move them onward and upward. Had a soil and water conservation district meeting. One big thing that we talked about is their state cost share contracts for well sealing. They had a lot of them that have been on the books for a considerable amount of time. So, what they did is cancel out those existing applications that have not had a lot of activity. Those people are more than welcome to reapply for that cost share, which several of them have already. But just in a way to clear up their books, NRCs, Danny Weber was there, the area conservationalist, and just overcapped the good work that they continue to do there. Space continues to be a discussion for them. They're not sure if they will be moving out of that property yet or not. So, they continue to talk about that. And another big issue that we continue to hear, yesterday we talked about it at the Township Association, is how the buffer strip initiatives will affect us if they go through. There are so many pieces left to be decided on that. And it's really too soon to really project anything, although there are four-hundred-and-fifty miles of water border in Clay County. So, whatever would happen, consider, could have a considerable effect on property owners. But also, once that goes through, I think it will be a joint collaboration between the soil and water, Clay County, the Buffalo Red Watershed. It will really have to be a group effort as to how we go forward. And then, yesterday I did also attend the Clay County Township Association meeting. I appreciate them continuing to include us. It's a great opportunity for us to connect with a lot of the township supervisors, but also hear from our staff. And I said it yesterday, and I just appreciate the good work that our staff continues to do. But I also appreciate the concerns that townships bring forward to us. And it's our responsibility as ever to meet in the middle and help facilitate some of that. But that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Kevin?
All right. I had, I also had the Facilities Committee Task Force that Jenny just talked about. We did go over the referendum and the school districts' plans, and then we were able to discuss our upcoming capital improvement or capital projects as well, as well as the city of Moorhead. Their issues now, they do have some infrastructure needs based on the referendum and the new schools and all of those things. So, they talked about some of that and how they plan on handling that. Then on, also that same day, we had a diversion public outreach meeting. And basically, that, they did a wrap-up of the, some of the places where they've gone. I know there was a presentation given to the Horace Lyons. There was some testimony given to the Water Topics Overview Committee in the state of North Dakota. And then, they talked about the upcoming meetings with the Minnesota Associate Floodplain Managers. That's this week. And then, also the North Dakota Waters Users Conference, December ninth and tenth. And then, the Basin Commission meeting in January. In addition, there was recognition given for, to the Mord Business Association for their recent endorsement of the diversion project. So, we're pleased to have them be involved with that as well. And then, on Thursday, the Diversion Authority met itself, and basically, some of these same things that we talked about in the Outreach Committee were discussed again at that level, as well as updates from the Business Leaders Task Force. And then, there was, they did an upgrade or an update to the Oxbow Memorandum of Understanding, did a recap of the trips, excuse me, to Washington, D.C., discussed the revised look of the FMdiversion.com website. And then, the issue regarding the, what was it called, Brian, the, on the property in South?
Hardship.
Hardship, hardship property in Clay County that was, it had gone through, the hardship committee had voted unanimously to go forward with, it was a purchase agreement, but in the agreement, it wouldn't actually buy the land until after the EIS is done and those things. But it would allow those homeowners who have the hardship and are unable to sell right now to at least make some decisions and move on. And it went to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee had a split vote on it. And primarily, it's my understanding, the issue was the appraisal process. They had some concerns about the appraisal process. I found that somewhat interesting based on the appraisal processes that have gone on in the Oxbow area. And all of a sudden, there's an appraisal issue in the property in Clay County. So...
It was high, or that it was?
Yeah, yeah. Well, there was, I'm not going to say they felt it was high, but there was a real disparity between the high and the low. There was, there was one number that came in really high, and then there was another number that came in considerably less. And so, there...
I thought I looked at that, though, and I think it was, in terms of Oxbow, that was two and a half times what things were worth. I don't think it was more than multiple thousands of dollars, was it?
Well, this one, this one we're talking about, you know, in excess of three-hundred-thousand versus two-hundred-thousand, you know. So, it's still, it was a significant difference in some of the numbers. And I told them, I said, I, that, you know, that's fine if they question that. So, they, you know, and then it went to Land Management, and the Land Management tabled it, I think, because they also wanted the Finance Committee to be able to go through the process. And so, I voiced, I voiced my opinion in terms of, as a representative of Minnesota on there, that we had reviewed this purchase agreement, and we've had our attorneys all review it. And the opinion was that we would not be violating any of the EIS issues with the state of Minnesota or the injunction that's out there on the federal level. And so, I, now I understand that they have a special meeting called Joint Meeting of Land Management, or the, yeah, Land Management and the Finance Committee for next week, and this issue hopefully will be resolved. And we can satisfy these people who have this hardship in Clay County.
Just want to comment on that really quick. I know that during Land Management, when it was coming up, and they're, we were reviewing their policies as to how they would go forward and what the last resort clause was. I know that it was very important for them to keep that in for Oxbow because Oxbow was what it was. And it was, there was not anything that was similar for them to relocate. And I know that I, as well as Heidi Durand, our Minnesota representatives on that committee, were very concerned that they would get past paying out hardship, hardship properties in Oxbow, and then they would remove that clause so that when they get to Minnesota, if they get to Minnesota, would start buying out properties and would be offering ten percent over. And if you want to talk fairness, that clearly is not any way to run a committee, to have such huge despairing numbers. So, I just, I hope that you can continue to advocate for that on that committee because...
Yeah. And the issue that you're referring to about taking language out, as you're aware, I did bring that up in the, at the diversion meeting, and they did vote to keep the language in, the significant language in there for, for that purpose.
But I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at maybe is, I don't know, if you've been to Southern Holy Cross Township lately, there's not a whole lot of properties that mimic that. And so, if they want to say that it's a housing of last resort, if you look in Southern Clay County, there really isn't anything else, so.
Yeah, and that was, that was one of their, one of their arguments was the comparable issues. They didn't have the comparable issues that they do have on the, because there's so many more properties on the North Dakota side. But anyway, I think, and I know Brian, Brian is also very involved with this. And you're going to, hopefully you'll be able to be at that Land Management, that combined meeting. It is a public, open meeting, I think, so I'm going to also, hopefully I can arrange my schedule to be there as well. But I'm not a member of the committee, but I just, I agree that we need to get this resolved in a fashion that's favorable or equally, when it comes to buyouts, as what Cass County had.
Because it will set quite a precedent.
Sure, right. Okay, and then, then this morning, we had a PIC meeting, and the primary topic was dealing with detox and personnel and nursing issues that are there. And lo and behold, we're having a hard time hiring nurses. And it's just been an age-old problem locally here because of the competitive nature that we have in this community with the hospitals, so. So, Darren and Brian continued to work on that with Kathy, and we're going to hopefully be able to come up with something for that. That's my report.
Okay, let's see. I had a Yellow Ribbon Committee meeting, and we just discussed some of the projects they're working on, one of which is they supporting our Veteran Service Office holiday party that they have for all our volunteers that contribute time every year. And had the PIC meeting this morning, and we did meet with Kirk on some solid waste issues, which will be coming up here shortly. And that was it for me. Brian, what do you have for us?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we had a solid waste meeting, and that was to talk about some, several issues. And Kirk just likes to keep the two representatives from the board on, informed as to all of the different projects that they have going on. And the, attended the Township Officers Meeting. That's already been discussed. I think, I think those are good meetings. There was just a little concern that was expressed reference the combining of the two highway shops from Holly and Roarg, the location and the service area. And I think we'll certainly be able to satisfy those concerns. Dave offered individual meetings with anybody that has a question in regards to the service and how they get there and how they're redesigning the districts and things. So, I think that'll go really well. PIC meeting's already been covered. Commissioner Mojo talked about the soil and water, and I did talk with Kevin Kassenbaum, the director over there, a little bit yesterday in regards to that. And she hit it very accurately. They are looking at some different office space. And of course, if you guys are aware, one of the locations or the location they're looking at is the Highway Department. But they're still very interested in that spot and working with Dave and the group on that. So, I think that's going to move forward, but it's taking a little bit of time. Spent some time on that, which has been covered very well in the hardship case and the Finance Committee and Land Management Committee and different things that happened there. With that, that's about it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll have our public hearing. Okay, I think we'll call the meeting back to order. The last item on our agenda for the day is a public hearing, and it's designation of solid waste generated in Clay County. Solid Waste Manager Kirk Rosenberg. Good morning, Kirk.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item...
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
You have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Kirk.
Sorry, I'm sorry that I jumped in.
Be so.
I am pretty excited, you know. That's my middle name.
Freedom of our being here, so.
The item before you today is a public hearing on the designation process. One thing that's very important for the public to know, I think there was some confusion at some point in time, that this public hearing was raising the rates at the tipping fees and the service fees. We are in the process of taking a look at tipping fees and service fee. The reason we're looking at tipping fees, we're moving from a volume-based pricing system to a weight-based pricing system. But we're not in a position yet to come up with a final number on what the tipping fee should be or the service fee. So, it's really important for people to understand that until we discuss that further, there's not going to be any increase on either the tipping fee or the service fee. It's, again, very important to understand this public hearing is not about raising the rates. What the public hearing is about is we are involved with a partnership with Prairie Lakes. Prairie Lakes is comprised of Ottertail County, Becker County, Todd County, and Wadena County. And as part of that process, all the counties that are involved with this are in this designation process. And what the designation process essentially means is, is that all the waste that's generated in Clay County will be transported either to the landfill at Clay County or the transfer station at the city of Moorhead. It's not any different than what's currently going on, so there's not going to be any changes at all. As part of the process, and I think we sent out some information for you, there's a procedure that's actually outlined in state statutes as far as what needs to be done in order to designate, designate the waste. The first step, we completed in October. That was a designation plan, and essentially it talked about all the waste that's generated within the county, where the waste was going to be transported to, how much material is being recycled and things like that. As I said, we completed that plan in October. It was approved by the MPCA, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, in October. And we're moving on to the second step. The second step in the process is what's happening today. It's a public hearing to talk about the designation process and take any comments, if there are any comments from the public at this point in time. The next step in the process is, is that we'll be negotiating contracts with the local haulers to try and secure a contract that they would bring their material to either the transfer stations or to the landfill. And again, these contracts will be submitted to the PCA for any comments that they may have as well. Finally, what will happen is, is that we'll develop an ordinance which will require the waste to be transported to the appropriate places. As you can see from the information that I sent out to you earlier, we hope to have the process completed by August of next, next year. So, with that, I'll stand to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kirk. Questions? Kevin, you?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. I know this, being involved now with Prairie Lakes, one might ask, well, why, why are we so concerned about making sure that all the garbage that comes from Clay County stays in Clay County? Well, we have this partnership with Prairie Lakes, and part of that is to be certain that we have... we have the necessary amount of waste material to send to keep that facility going and to keep that thing on budget as well, so it's all, it all kind of ties in in one big picture. I do want to state, too, that in the future, as we move forward with this proposed new transfer station and the, the household hazardous waste facility, and the reviewing of a potential MRF, that I think one of the things that we're looking strongly at that would benefit the citizens would be the single sort recycling down the road, and even, even though we have this designation plan, it still would not, it would not, we would still be allowed to, for example, if we're, MPCA wants us to take a regional look at this by several counties, and whether MRF ends up being in Clay County or whether it be someplace else, or whether we decide to discuss with our neighbors to the west, that this designation plan would not interfere with our ability to transport recycled products outside of Clay County.
That's very, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, that's a very good point to have people understand, is that this does not in any way restrict our ability to recycle at all. This designation ordinance only applies to mixed garbage that you place out of your curb, so that's a very good point, Kevin.
Ryan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Kirk, but I do believe what I've heard over the years, the reason for a designation plan is also the liability of the solid waste that is collected from the county. That follows the county no matter where it goes, if that garbage is, ends up someplace else and it's contaminated, and then there, the site is contaminated, we could be held liable, and this helps that flow control of that, and that was, I know has been a reason that's been always addressed.
Mr. Chairman, Brian, that's exactly right. I mean, what that does is, it gives us a better opportunity to manage our risk. If there is some material that goes to a site, a landfill, that does have some problems in the future, obviously, we would be liable for it, and it'll be in the deep pocket, we could have significant exposure there, so this gives us a better opportunity to manage our risk.
Kevin?
I want to make one other comment, too, and part of what Kirk said in his opening statement, too, about the, we're currently under a volume-based, and I think, I think he mentioned that we, we will be going to a weight-based, and that hasn't been ultimately decided, because that will actually be this board's decision to do that, but I think, I think once we hear more from our haulers and get input from our cities, that also we, we deal with and partner with on solid waste issues, I think we'll be able to come to some sort of a easier way to control how, you know, on volume, it's, it's kind of hard to know just how much is going in there compared to weight, and so we'll see how that process goes. It's, I just, I just want to maybe correct Kirk a little bit and say that, that it isn't a given, but it's, it's a direction we'd like to go, so.
Fine, well, taken.
All right.
Any other comments? Anyone, right, anyone else would like to be heard? Lauren, please. Do you want to come up to the microphone, Lauren, please?
Just a question, I, because I don't know the answer, so that's why, how many generators, or I mean, how many haulers do we have in Clay County that haul other places? Do we?
That haul other places?
Yeah.
Kirk, do you have?
Mr. Chairman, I think that right now, we may have one hauler that may be calling from a different place.
Okay, and so that hauler then will have to haul here instead?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
That's the only question I have.
Yeah, that can lead to, you know, so when the haulers come to us, then they also have to pay our tipping fee rates or our volume-based rates, and, and so if there's a hauler that's maybe, maybe has found a place that has a lesser rate than ours, might be able to charge less than the other ones, that might impact those folks, because we, everybody's going to be required to pay our tipping fees.
But as, as, just, I want to make one point clear, as Mr. Burke pointed out, we may also have the exposure as a result of that as well.
Sure, right.
So it's either pay me now or pay me later, and it's basically it.
Jenny?
That was going to be my comment as well, I, I get concerned about the liability that, that anchor, if we are shipping to other places other than the designated for Clay County, it could turn into something that would be very costly for the county.
Okay, anyone else would like to be heard?
Move to close the hearing.
Motion and a second to close the hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. From the board's wishes.
Do we have the?
On the agenda, just, just to have a public hearing.
Do we have something we need to approve, or?
At this point, I think the public hearing is all you may need to have.
Okay. Okay, anything else for Kirk? Good work, Kirk, thanks.
Thank you.
Good work, and appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Kevin, you have something?
I just, I, I want to also comment on something that Jenny touched on in her committee reports, and that's the, the work that was done by the county staff on behalf of the school bond referendum. When we met as a, as the facilities group, they, they clearly wanted to let us know how satisfied they were in the good work that the county people made in, in that whole election process, and how they really made it go smooth for the school district, and so kudos to our staff for, I concur with Jenny on that, that it was a job well done.
Anything else for the board this morning? Steve, anything for us, or Vicki, anything?
Nothing else.
Brian, anything else? Hearing nothing. Word here.